Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Atumwa City Council meeting. I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. If everybody would rise, we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
The first item tonight is going to be a Board of Health meeting. So before we start the regular council meeting, we're going to go ahead and go to our Atumwa Board of Health Meeting, and Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Pope? Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Approve the minutes for meeting number one on June 20th, 2023, as presented. Recommendation: Approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set to consider condemnation of the structures on the property located at 831 Lillian in the city of Atumwa, Wapalo County, Iowa.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and I believe, Zach, you're going to present.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. So this is a, I guess the first thing I'll say is that it's been a little while since we've done one of these, but we do have, I think, a total of six condemnation hearings coming up in the next few meetings, so that'll be something to look forward to on the sort of pace of tackling the derelict property issues in Atumwa. This case here is a little bit of a longer one, so I'm going to give a little bit, or not a long case, actually, but just a little bit of a difficult one, so I'll give a little bit more information probably than we usually do, just to share some of the difficulty we've had on this one. 831 Lillian was placarded just in August 18th of last year, but it's generated quite a bit more notes and quite a few more inspections than typical cases for a variety of reasons. We were called out with the Atumwa Police Department. They were issuing some citations with issues with dogs and had reported us some conditions in the home we looked at, and there were some significant living conditions issues. Over the next several months, we've been called for a variety of issues by the neighbors. There's been, most recently, a warrant served on issue of water theft, but there's been numerous issues. Repair plan has been filed for a three-month repair plan in September of last year. No progress has been made on that. This has also tested our permission system pretty badly. We've had multiple issues with folks overstaying permission. We've had issues with folks on the permission form, present at the property, but not doing anything to further the case. As I said, there's really been no progress in the entire duration of the case. So this is really just one that's highlighted the issues we have, and just for the sake of the community, wanted to comment on. The notes that go into this, the amount of inspections, the amount of time that goes into it, it has really been a frustrating one, but we do see with the lack of progress, with the continuing issues there, electrical issues, utility issues, structural issues, that this is one that really needs to be condemned and handled quickly.
Does Council have any questions for Zach? Since this is a public hearing, does anyone in the audience have any comments that they'd like to make regarding this property? Yes, would you come to the podium and introduce yourself and give your name and address, please?
My name is Amy Garrett, and I previously lived at 831 Lillian.
Do you want to pull that microphone down for me a little bit? Thank you.
My name is Amy Garrett, and I previously lived at 831 Lillian. And I'm not disputing that there hasn't been any progress because I don't have the money to make the improvements. I was in the hospital for this last week. I was not allowed to get my stuff out of the house. I called and told somebody that I was in the hospital, and I would not be able to get my stuff out when they unboarded it. And I, I'm going to say, I was rudely told that that would be the day that I could get it, and that was it. I have a note from the hospital that says I have been in the hospital for a week. I just would like to get my things out of the house.
Zach, do you have any comment you'd like to make regarding her request?
Sure. So we did receive a request earlier this month. The property, we've, pretty recently, I think July 21st, we decided to go ahead and board up the property because we've had continued issues with folks occupying the property overnight. So we did have our contractor board up the property at expense. And so we did have a request on the 7th to have Ms. Garrett be able to go into the property to collect belongings. We agreed to that, and we opened the property up on August 9th in order to have some belongings taken out, and then we've boarded it, since boarded it back up. We're going to have to conduct asbestos inspections and things like that before demolition work is going to be done on the property, and we're fine to accommodate another request, but it does cost money to have the contractor go reopen the property and close it back up, so it does have to be at a specific time in order to keep it secure. So whatever, you know, whatever date works with Ms. Garrett, we're happy to accommodate that, but we will have to have some notice and just, you know, do it at a specific time.
Do you have anything else you want to say, ma'am?
Um, no, that's it.
Okay.
I mean, I just wanted my belongings out of the house.
And it sounds like Mr. Simons said if you contact his office, he'll try and make arrangements for you to be able to do that.
And I do have a contractor that's willing to help me demolish it and haul it away, if that was something you guys would look into. That way, I'm not, I don't owe you guys for demolishing it.
So the, prior to this meeting, we did send a 30-day notice to abate. That would have included an opportunity to begin any sort of process. None of that's been done. With the track record on the property, I think the best thing to do is to resolve the issue after the notice has been given and to condemn it today.
Thank you. Any other questions from Council? If not, anyone else in the audience want to speak? Okay, if not, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Condemn the structures located at 831 Lillian. Order prompt demolition, removal, and leveling of the lot, and direct all costs attendant to such actions, including administrative costs, to be assessed against the property and/or collected from the owner or owners thereof. Recommendation: Approve the condemnation of the structures located at 831 Lillian.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set to consider condemnation of the structures of the property located at 903 Silk in the city of Atumwa, Wapalo County, Iowa.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and I believe, Zach, you're going to present again on this property.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. The structure at 913 Silk was placarded November 11th, 2022 for lack of utilities and inadequate living conditions. In that time, we have not had any progress toward completing any repairs or received a repair plan, and there's no current permission. We have had to complete an extensive cleanup for nuisance issues around the property and have also towed two junk vehicle campers that were parked at the property. Recommendation would be to condemn this one as well.
Does Council have any questions for Zach regarding this property?
Zach, I do. You said 913. I'm just clarifying, you meant 903.
I did mean 903.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone in the audience want to speak regarding this property? If not, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Condemn the structures located at 903 Silk. Order prompt demolition, removal, and leveling of the lot, and direct all costs attendant to such actions, including administrative costs, to be assessed against the property and/or collected from the owner or owners thereof. Recommendation: Approve the condemnation of the structures located at 903 Silk.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved. Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set to consider condemnation of the structures on the property located at 442 South Moore in the city of Atumwa, Wapalo County, Iowa.
I'll go ahead and open the public meeting, and Zach, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. This property, or this case is a little newer than the last two. This property was placarded March 21st of this year. On April 12th, just a couple of weeks later, there was a structure fire that caused significant damage to the property. It's really not even possible to close it in entirely from the elements. It's remained open for the duration of the file. No repair plan has been submitted, no permission obtained to enter the property, and the staff recommendation would be to demolish this one as well.
Does Council have any questions for Zach regarding this property? If not, does anyone in the audience want to speak regarding this particular property? If not, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Condemn the structures located at 442 South Moore. Order prompt demolition, removal, and leveling of the lot, and direct all costs attendant to such actions, including administrative costs, to be assessed against the property and/or collected from the owner or owners thereof. Recommendation: Approve the condemnation of the structures located at 442 South Moore.
Move the recommendation as presented. Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Since this is all the information that needs to be dealt with at the Board of Health meeting tonight, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Health meeting.
So moved. Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Okay, I believe we're ready to move to the Atumwa City Council meeting, and Chris will take the role for this.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Pope? Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Do we have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve tonight's City Council agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is our city administrators' report to council and citizens. I'm going to turn it over to Phil Rath.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Looking out and seeing a lot of faces in the audience tonight, and that is great to see. So hopefully, it is, for some of you, is to help recognize a couple of the individuals we have under the report here. You are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you are here only for that, or you're free to leave after the recognition. What I'm going to do is go through the three individuals that we have here to recognize and go through each of those, and then ask them to come up, after we're done with the three, to come up front for a picture with the mayor. We'll have individual pictures, and then a group photo of the three of you with the mayor to help recognize this event and get you on the old television here for future reference. So we have some good things that are happening and people in the community to recognize. The first one that I have on the list here is recognition of Annalise Bell, and I hopefully said the name correct. And we're recognizing her tonight for her success at the World Finals competition in dance. So just a few weeks ago, Annalise represented, and the competition was in Mexico this year. I believe it was supposed to be in Russia, but got rerouted. And this isn't her first time, so she was able to bring home a silver medal this year. And in a prior time, she had represented with a group, I believe, and they brought home a gold medal in jazz and contemporary. This year, she was competing in, I don't, let's see, she was competing in, it'll come to me here, silver medal, World Finals. It's the Olympics for Dance, and, oh, help me out, Annalise, what was it?
Acro.
Acro, acro dance, okay, yes, thank you. So congratulations for that great achievement, and we'll have you come up in just a moment to get a picture.
Can we have our stand, though, so everyone in the audience?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Why don't you stand and be recognized quick?
Yep. Perfect.
And that was submitted to us by a very proud aunt, Faith Ann. So thank you for bringing that to our attention so that we could have some good news, and Annalise is a resident of Atumwa, so congratulations. And next up, we have recognition of Elena Boyer for Junior Olympics, Trampoline and Tumbling, and I'm going to turn this one over to Kara, who brought it to our attention.
Perfect. First, I'm going to have Elena stand up so she can be standing while we talk about her. So at the end of July, Junior Olympics occurred, and it was held here in Des Moines, and many people from Iowa Explosion, Trampoline and Tumbling, attended. However, Elena won the gold medal in tumbling intermediate for girls 15 and older, so we have a gold medalist here with us today. Elena embodies that of a gold medalist in so many ways. She is an amazing role model, coach, athlete, and mentor to so many. This last year, several times, she played double duty as an athlete and a coach, but still persevered to become the AAU Junior Olympic champion. Elena is passionate about the sport of tumbling and trampoline, both for herself and those around her. She's always pushing herself to do better and is an asset to the younger athletes around her. And so, I mean, I got chills because she is just an amazing person, and I can't wait to see what else she does. So Elena Boyer.
And the third person we're recognizing tonight is Erin Naylor, and I'm going to ask Zach to speak on this one. Got a certificate of recognition, and I'll let Zach talk about what she did with the Main Street Open for Business program.
Yeah, thank you. Every year, the Iowa Downtown Conference starts with the Open for Business competition, which different communities can submit one business in their Main Street district that's pretty new and is looking to grow in new and exciting ways. And Erin recently opened Heron Cross on Court Street in downtown Atumwa. She's a paper conservator, and her business saves and preserves historic documents, artwork, and family heirlooms. Heron Cross also includes a vintage shop and is looking to expand into printmaking, which was one of the elements of her presentation this year. This is the first time an Atumwa business made it to the finals of the Open for Business competition, and Erin did finish third for a prize of $10,000 that will go toward expanding that business into the new areas that she's looking at, including better equipment for preservation, but also the printmaking.
Erin, can you stand up?
Erin, can you stand up?
And actually, if we can have, if we can have Erin, Elena, and Annalise all come forward for a photo, please.
And Mayor, while you're walking down, I forgot to say, I had two athletes from the gym that Elena coaches, and they wanted me to let her know that she is, everyone to know that she is really nice, and she pushes them hard, but she's a great coach.
Just do an individual picture with the mayor, and then we'll do a group one.
You can tell we don't do this where we're living.
And then all, everybody together, yeah. It's always nice when we have good news to share about people from our community, and so thank you all for your achievements. It's very, very much appreciated to have that, be able to recognize you in this way. Again, you are welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting if you want. You are also free to go, and we are going to bring up Scott Holgren and whoever else he has with him, representing Bridgeview Center and BBC Inc. They, I guess it's not an annual report, but a brief report, and presentation of a check from BBC Inc., Board of Directors, to the city.
Thank you, Minister. My name is Rich, and I'm the Vice President for Bridgeview Inc. This is our Director, Scott Holgren, and we have Eric Dodson, a pediatrician in town, also a board member. We're here to give you guys $125,000. I know you guys like that. He's got a check in his hand, actually, as we speak, and we have that check over there that you cannot take to the bank, but we will take a picture with it for Facebook. Just a couple, some talking points, because I know you guys got an agenda to move forward, but to date, we've given over $1.7 million to the city of Atumwa since 2009. We started that endowment in 2005, and the first payment was actually given out in 2009. Also, in 2019, we've taken initiative to try to lessen the burden that we ask from the city all the time and actually start a capital improvement campaign. And since 2009, we've got all the way up to $800,000, so that's actually going to be good moving forward, that we can do some of these big projects, and we don't have to keep going to the administrator and asking for money. I know he loves those meetings. Would have been a lot more money, but the stock market was a little rough last year. Bridgeview also relaunched its capital improvement campaign in the spring of 2022 to reach our goal of at least $1 million for the BBC Inc. Capital Endowment Fund, and ultimately securing over $2 million for the long-term stability of the Capital Improvement Endowment Fund. And now we're in the 16th year, Bridgeview is, and the community, serving our community at large. We love that. And lastly, want to give a few points for last year, and 2022 was kind of a rough year because we're still coming out of the pandemic, but we're able to have 399 events, 620 event and use days. We had over 105,710 people attend events in 2022. So despite the continued challenges, Bridgeview still yielded multimillion-dollar economic impact to the city of Atumwa in 2022. We hope to grow that in 2023. So who wants to take a picture?
Tell me, just for the record, Scott had nothing to do with you guys' injuries, did he?
Actually, he did.
They both got their arms encased.
Yeah, it's a taxing to be a board member for Bridgeview Inc., and this is part of it right here.
You know, I was, I was just getting...
Oh, okay.
We've been told twice.
I was actually just getting ready to say that it looks like somebody's not doing anything around here, and it clearly isn't those two.
The writing's on the wall.
I guess I would just like to say, just for transparency for the public, even though Bridgeview Center is a city facility now, the Bridgeview Center Board of Directors has continued to exist, and they work extremely hard every year, trying to raise money and do fundraising to help continue with the upkeep and the maintenance of Bridgeview. And without their ongoing help and fundraising, it would be a big financial burden on the city. So I just want you guys to know how much we really do appreciate all the Bridgeview Center Board of Directors' ongoing efforts in helping to make Bridgeview a viable facility for many, many years to come.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do I get that? Well, see, you want this?
Well, they both have one good arm.
Don't work too hard, Scott.
I was wondering why he was speaking so fast. He's got to go, I guess, so.
I thought I spoke fast.
All right. I said one other thing I wanted to mention real quick, Mayor, and that is, yesterday kicked off an opportunity for people who want to run for council to submit their papers, and that runs through the end of this month at 5 o'clock, so August 31st, 5 o'clock. It's the last day to turn in nomination papers. We have two seats that are up this year, and if we have five or more people running, there will need to be a primary as well. So something to keep in mind if you're interested. You can talk to any of the council members, or myself, or Chris, to find out what it all entails. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is where I ask if anybody would like to speak on any of our agenda items tonight. We do have a couple people that do want to speak later in our council meeting on non-agenda items, but is there anybody who wants to speak on any of the agenda items that are on our agenda tonight? Okay. The next thing is, we'll move into another public hearing.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing to accept written or oral comments from the public on the spending plans for the 2023 Justice Assistance Grant Program funds to be obtained from the Bureau of Justice Assistance.
I'm going to head and open the public hearing, and I believe Police Chief Farrington is going to cover this.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is the Justice Assistance Grant that we get through the Bureau of Justice Assistance every single year, the JAG grant. These are funds through violent crime that we report to the federal government, is reflected on those federal monies that come back to us in this JAG grant. This year, as you can see in the report, we're looking at, the money is to be used for equipment that can basically further our duties and service to the public, and for equipment regarding protection of our officers. So this particular year, we're looking at a 24-by-36 ballistic shield, 16 RMR, Level 3 plus plates or armor plates, and then the dual-mode thermal camera.
Does Council have any questions for Police Chief Farrington? Does anyone in the audience, since this is a public hearing, have anything that they'd like to say? If not, I would go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Consider accepting the 2023 JAG grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance in the amount of $26,628. Recommendation: Approve submission of the grant over the Internet and authorize the mayor to sign any related documents as may be required.
So moved. Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 3215, 2023, amending the municipal code of the city of Atumwa, Iowa by repealing and replacing Sections 2-30 and 2-58 of Chapter 2 for the purpose of increasing compensation of the mayor and city council members. Recommendation: Pass the second consideration of Ordinance Number 3215, 2023.
Move the recommendation as presented. Second.
Phil, I believe you're going to present.
Yeah, so just real brief, this was brought up for the first reading, last meeting, and the last time these amounts were adjusted was 1999, and the request is to move the mayor's compensation from $9,000 per year to $10,200, and then the city council members from $4,000 per year to $6,000 per year. The last, the first time it was read, at the August 1st meeting, it was passed by a 5-0 vote, and so it's moved to the second reading before you're here tonight.
Is there any other questions? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Department update presentation by HR. Recommendation: Receive update.
And I believe Barb Cocho, our HR Director, is going to present on this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So there was a memo that came out in your packet, and I'm just going to kind of review some of the highlights from that, but we wanted to provide an update on some of the happenings with the fire station and some of the staffing that we're seeing there. So we are currently down seven positions in the fire department, and actually, that has changed now. We're only down six positions. We did hire a new firefighter effective yesterday. They did start... They did start, and they will, we plan to put them on shift, I believe, as of next week. So our current fire chief is out on a medical leave, and we do not expect the fire chief to return prior to his retirement at the end of September. So in the interim, we have named an interim fire chief, which will be Pat Short. He is our Assistant Fire Chief, and he has stepped up, and he's going to take that role. Pat will come off shift, and he will work Monday through Friday in the actual chief role. So he's not going to be balancing two roles every day. We are also without a deputy fire chief due to a resignation earlier this year. So we have also named interim Deputy Fire Chief as David Cronin. David, again, very similar to Pat, will be coming off of shift and will be working the Deputy Fire Chief position only, and that will allow us to get caught up on inspections and liquor licenses and things like that as well. We are currently without a fire captain due to a termination, and we are also, we will have another fire captain who will be retiring this coming Friday, will be his last day, so we would be down two fire captains.
Can I interrupt for just a second?
Yes, go ahead.
Which individual is that that's leaving due to retirement?
David Jaeger is retiring on Friday. Dave spent a lot of time in the department. He's been there, how many years?
About 30.
Yeah, 30 years, almost 30 years in the department, so. So with those two captain openings, we do have current civil service lists, and they are active and they are current. So we have promoted two people to, from the captain list into those positions. They have accepted the positions, and we believe, based on everything that we've got, that they will be starting this last, I think, yesterday. And then the other one will be starting the day after Dave leaves, after his retirement. So we will have those in a captain position. So that then opens up more master firefighter positions. Same thing, though, we do have active lists for them for civil service. So we have made the offers to them, and we are awaiting responses from them. We do anticipate that they would be accepted, and so those would be filled within the next couple of weeks as well. As far as staffing goes, City Administrator Rath has been in contact with Atumwa Regional just to make sure that they are aware that we are down in staffing. So that way, just, they can be aware, so if it's, you know, as far as call volume or things like that, everybody is in communication with it. City Administrator and I have been meeting with the Assistant Fire Chiefs. We met with them last week, and we also met with them yesterday, along with the two interim people, just to talk about the department, what's needed, different things that we can do, really trying to just work together to make sure that the fire department understands that we are here to support them, and we will work through whatever these are. We do have two firefighters that are going, or potential firefighters that are going through the process, the pre-employment process, with physicals, background checks, things like that. We do anticipate that those physicals and everything should be done within the next couple of weeks, so we should have two more firefighters that we should be able to bring on. This next week, we do have it to go to the Civil Service Commission to be able to test for firefighters again as well. So that would leave us to, I believe, two positions. After we hire these two, there's either one or two additional positions that would be open. So we will be looking to post and to try and staff our department back up as well. For the fire chief and for the deputy fire chief, those are civil service positions as well, and so we will have tests for them. We had initially worked with one of our sister cities to help us with that testing, because in the state of Iowa, many of our, many of the cities, what they do is they work, the departments work together, and outside chiefs will come in and actually do the assessment, whether it's the tactical, whether it's the interviews or presentations, so that way to help to eliminate some of the biases. And the initial sister city that we were working with unfortunately had some things going on, so they are not able to help us with that. However, they did give us references of who we could utilize, and so the City Administrator and I have been in contact with that company. And Eric, who is also, he is a current fire chief in one of our sister cities, he will be working with us and actually completing the test for deputy fire chief as well as for fire chief. And this will bring in external fire chiefs, again, coming in to help to reduce those biases. And those tests will be done October 19th, and then the chief one will be done October 20th. And then from there, that'll go to the Civil Service Commission, and then it will come to you all for list creation, and then we will make an appointment from there.
Even though there's no approval required for Barb's report tonight, does Council have any questions that they'd like to ask?
Just going back here, just from a hierarchy thing, you mentioned the two captains, or the two people that'd be moving up into the captains' roles. Who are those two folks?
So we have Gary Dowd will become a captain, and then Josh Chance will also become a captain. We're working with the department now. One of the things that we actually found out yesterday during our meeting is that the fire department, and even the police department, they normally do a pinning ceremony, and that was not something that I was even aware of. So the department now is actually working on getting the, is it badges or a pin? A badge. They're ordering those, getting those in, and we will actually bring those to council to be able to, to recognize these firefighters for their promotions.
Any other questions from Council? Barb, just for the benefit of the public, and I know you could probably talk about this for half an hour, but, you know, a lot of people don't understand that a lot of city positions are civil service, and there's a whole process you have to go through, which can delay hiring for quite a while. Can you just, real briefly, hit what you have to do when you go to fill a civil service position, just for the benefit of the public?
Absolutely. So any position that is not considered a department head position, a secretarial position to that department head, any full-time, regular position within the city is considered civil service. And that is, we are governed by Code 400 of the Iowa Code, and there is a very specific process that's laid out, and the Civil Service Commission oversees that. And so the process actually starts with them. We need to take things to the Civil Service Commission for their approval to post it. It does have to be posted for a certain amount of time, and then there is a test that has to be completed. And that test is very specific to what those positions are. For example, we did a mechanics test a week ago, two weeks ago, and so the questions there were about a, what things that a mechanic should know. We're getting ready to do a Public Information Officer test, and that would be talking about sentence structure and grammar and all of those fun things we learned in English class many years ago. But, so each one of those tests are very specific to the positions. Some of those positions also have hands-on testing, so like our firefighters, they actually do a physical part of that, where they do have to go, and you've got a different testing results and things that are included in that. Equipment operator, so our people that run some of our equipment down at streets and sewers, it's actually a hands-on portion where you get into the machines, and you are graded on, on being able to utilize those machines and, and understand what that is. Once all of that is done, many a times, too, an interview is also part of that process, and you're given a total score, and then that score determines if you are able to be on that civil service list or not. It goes to the Civil Service Commission for their approval, and then it comes to council for approval, and then only then, once that is done, can we actually make a hire from that position. So it is a very lengthy process. On average, right now, our time to fill a position, if we do not have a civil service list completed, it's about 95 days, which is a very, very lengthy process. The national average for local government is 130 days, so we are well under what the national average is, but we still have room for improvement, too.
And Atumwa has a three-member Civil Service Commission, right?
Correct.
And who are those individuals, again?
Ed Wilson, Ann Youngman, and Amy Gardner. Is that right? Okay.
Thank you, Barb, for providing that.
Yeah.
Any other questions before Barb sits down from Council?
I don't have a question. I have a comment.
Okay.
I just want to thank Barb for this report. I think that this goes a long way with transparency within the city, especially with something as big as this whole situation has become. I also thank the other, the two right here for stepping up into those interim roles and helping us work to just continue to improve the fire department and the city and that relationship. Thank you.
I would echo that, too. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, I guess we're ready for resolutions.
Resolution Number 110-2023, approving change order number one and accepting the work as final and complete, and approving the final pay request for the 2022 Asphalt Street Repair Program. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution Number 110-2023.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second. Okay, Phil, I believe you're going to present.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the Asphalt Street Repair Program. This comes out of our maintenance budget. This year, the work was performed by Norris Asphalt. We worked on two streets. We did extensive patching on Lake Road, hoping to get a little more time out of that street. We're replacing the culverts now, and will eventually replace the, the whole street full depth. And the second area we worked on was North Court. We milled off all four inches of asphalt that existed on the street. The concrete below it was in excellent condition. We had one patch on the whole stretch from Gulf to Hy-Vee. Then we put down a one-inch inner layer, which is like a really flexible asphalt, and it helps seal water from penetrating into the concrete, into the base of the road, and retard reflective cracking. And then on top of the inner layer, we put three inches of, of overlay. The work was completed this July, and we recommend that the city accept the work as final and complete.
I've had several people ask me, is there any plans down the road to do the other section of North Court go in the other direction?
Yes. We have, yeah, we're looking at doing, in front of the schools, the next area we're working on right now. We're working to get STB money to do that, state, state money.
Okay. The Council have any questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Thank you, Phil.
Resolution Number 125-2023, approving submission for a REAP grant to fund Phase 1 of the Oxbow Lagoon Trail Project. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution Number 125-2023.
I believe the recommendation is presented.
Second. And Phil, I believe you're going to present on this.
Well, I think we've got Kim Hellegie here as well. I know she had requested this to, to be here, and if you wanted to say anything about it, Kim? It's here.
I don't need to.
Okay, all right, so.
Do you have questions that you want answered?
Okay, very good. So the request came forward to continue the, the trail system here, and the, the grant program is for 100%. It's not to exceed $150,000 in a given year or part of a project. And this, this would be looking at the, did I have it in here? This is looking at the section, Phase 1 Oxbow, and, oh, shoot. Coming round off Richmond and going into... Yes, yes, thank you. Coming off Richmond and going into Atumwa Park. Thank you. I don't know if there was any questions about the grant application?
I don't have questions, but I do have a comment, if that would be okay.
Go ahead.
So I think that this is phenomenal and well-needed. I do want to express some frustration that we, I'm glad that there was an extension, that this was able to be approved and turned in after the meeting tonight, but I do want to just express frustration that, you know, we almost, because of the timeliness that this, this wasn't timely, we almost had to not be able to approve this because there was difficulty in trying to get a special meeting set up to approve this. And again, I'm glad that there was a way that we're able to approve it tonight, but I just want to remind everyone that if we are submitting grant applications and we do have a timeline, we need to ensure that they are timely so that we don't risk them not getting approved. Thank you.
Does Council have any other comments?
I was just going to say, based on the application materials that I saw, we're looking at an estimated cost of $133,600, which is under that $150,000. So there's a little bit of room for that, but you'd be looking at that whole amount to, to cover this project.
And I guess I would just like to express my appreciation to Kim Hellegie and the staff and all the people that work with her on the Wapalo County Trail System, because without their ongoing efforts, we would not have the trail system that we have in Atumwa. And they work extremely hard and go after all kinds of grant funding every year to get grant funding, so the city doesn't have to try and come up with the money to keep building these trails. So, Kim, I just want you to know, the city really does appreciate your efforts and all the people affiliated with the Wapalo County Trail System. Thank you. Okay, if there's no other questions, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Resolution Number 126-2023, approving the purchase of ethanol and diesel pumps from Mid-Iowa Petroleum Equipment for the Public Works Department in the amount of Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution Number 126-2023.
I believe the recommendation is presented.
Second. Okay, Phil.
Thank you, Mayor. So down at 1010 Gateway, our old Public Works Garage, we have two sets of pumps, or one set of pumps, there's a gas and a diesel pump. We think they were put in about 30 years ago. Can't find parts for them anymore, so we budgeted some money to replace those so that we don't lose access to that. Everybody, every department uses it. So anyway, we budgeted $35,000, and we found two electric pumps for just under, or just over $23,000.
Does Council have any questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Resolution Number 127-2023, approving repairs to the roof at 550 Gateway Drive Public Works by Commercial Roof Coatings of Lynn, Missouri, in the amount of $86,500. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution Number 127-2023.
Okay, Phil.
Okay, so this is for 5...
Sorry. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second. Now you can speak.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is for 550 Gateway Drive. This is our new Public Works Garage. We purchased that in 2013 and moved from 1010 to this location. The building is built 1978. We think the roof is probably original to that time, still structurally sound, but it has some leaks in it. So this, this repair product sprays down an inch of expanded, or an inch of polyurethane foam, which adds about an R7 to the roof, and then that's top coated with two layers of elastomeric roof sealant, which is kind of like paint, but about 10 times thicker, and it, it's, it stretches, so it'll move with the roof, too. And it's supposed to last 15 years. With care, it could last longer, but the warranty's for 15 years, and we think it's a good investment for the lifespan of the product, since the roof is still structurally sound.
Does Council have any questions for Phil?
I just have a couple. So before they put that inch of foam down, are they going to be cutting out any bad spots, or are they just laying the foam?
No, they spray acid on the roof first to get rid of any rust and to clean the roof off, and then they'll spray the foam on top of that.
So is, is there no foam on it now?
No, so it's, it's under, there's insulation under it, but this sprays on this, on the top of the roof. They'll spray the insulation on the top of the roof and then put the coating over that to protect...
Okay, so the current, the current roof then is metal, and we'll be spraying the foam over the top of the metal.
Correct.
And the, and the insulation that's there now is actually under, inside the building, basically?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Resolution Number 128-2023, approving the purchase of a flatbed tilt trailer to transport number 42 Case mini excavator in the amount of $29,575 from Carroll Supply. Recommendation: Pass and adopt Resolution Number 128-2023.
We have a motion to approve the recommendation. So moved.
Second.
Okay, Phil.
Thank you, Mayor. So this trailer was budgeted for $35,000. The low bid came in at $29,575. It's a flatbed tilt, tilt bed trailer that the sewer department uses to haul around the mini excavator. They use it every single day. The old one is getting rusty, the deck's wearing out, and by the time we could repair And by the time we could repair it, they're better off just getting a new one. This was approved by Fleet Committee at their May 24 meeting.
When you have to buy equipment, do these companies give any kind of a reduced price for governmental entities?
For vehicles, there's a state bid price. You can get for trailers, I don't believe so.
Okay. Does council have any questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Resolution number 129-2023, awarding the contract for asbestos abatement and demolition of 530 West Woodland to Weston McKee of Fairfield, Iowa, for the best bid, $1,500 for abatement and $11,700 for demolition, for a total of $13,200. Recommendation pass and adopt Resolution number 129-2023.
Move the recommendation is presented.
Second. Okay, Zach.
Thank you, Mayor. 530 West Woodland is a property that was condemned at a previous meeting. Bids were accepted until 2:00 p.m. on August 3, and three bids for asbestos and three bids for demolition were received. The bid tabulation is attached in the packet. The best bid was for the amounts that Chris listed, a total of $13,200 from Weston McKee, and staff recommends awarding the contract.
Does council have any questions for Zach? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Resolution number 131-2023, updating and approving the Des Moines River Flood Protection Operation Plan 2023. Recommendation pass and adopt Resolution number 131-2023.
Move the recommendation is presented.
Second.
You're getting a workout tonight, Phil.
Yeah.
You're up.
Thanks, thank you, Mayor. So we originally passed this in May of '22. It was submitted to FEMA. We've got comments back from FEMA on this flood plan. The basic structure of it didn't change. Some details did, though. We added evacuation routes and impacted areas, a map of those, to the flood plan. They wanted each closure individually addressed in the flood plan, so we did that. We added operation sheets for each CSO and each pump station that specify that rather than referencing other manuals. And then we also clarified levy and flood wall maintenance requirements. This flood plan is required to get our levies accredited by FEMA. The plan is, if this is approved by council tonight, we'll resubmit it to FEMA and hopefully allay all their comments they had on it.
Does council have any questions for Phil regarding this operational plan? I thought it was well-written, and I thought it was really put together very well. And it's something, like you said, that you need to have in place. Hopefully, we won't have to use it, but at least if you do, it's there.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought it was very well-written.
And FEMA requires it to be accepted by city council, not just created by the department. So that's why it's coming before council.
Any other comments, questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Okay, this is the point in our city council meeting where I ask people to come forward and speak on agenda... Non-agenda items that are not on our agenda tonight. And we have two individuals that would like to speak. So first off, I'm going to call Mr. Saffel up to the microphone. And if you can state your name and address and three minutes for what you'd like to address the council with.
My name is Ashley John Saffel. My friends call me Sam, my wife calls me sir, but that's a whole new discussion. I'm here this evening to invite and to challenge each of you to attend our annual Ford Fest Car Show activity this weekend. It's something that we've been doing as a club for 37 years. We've had the show here in Atumwa for the last five years. It's been a two-day event, this will be the third year. We bring, hopefully this year with good weather, we'll have upward of 250 cars in the show from as far away as Kentucky, Pennsylvania, all the surrounding states. It's a fundraiser. The money that we raise, we use for local things. Last few years, we've given to the Shop with a Cop program. We provided funds for the Diesel Tech Program at Indian Hills. We have given two scholarships to Indian Hills students. We give to the Blessings Food Kitchen. We've given to the What Would You Do Shelter, et cetera, et cetera. I'm running out of thoughts. We've, it's just something that we try to promote the community. One reason we went to two-day event was because we were getting a large number of people coming in from out of town on Saturday when nothing to do. So Saturday, all our events on Saturday are open to anyone and everyone, all makes, models, colors, we don't care. There's a shop tour that starts at 12:30. We're going to Angler's to look at a car collection. We'll be back that evening about 5:30 for a cruising event, again, all makes, models. Soon as it gets dark enough, we'll set up and we're going to show a movie. Everything we do Saturday is free, open to the public. Sunday, we have a swap meet that's getting pretty popular. Then we have the all Ford-powered show. The Kiwanis will be there serving breakfast in the morning. We'll have local food trucks there for lunch. We've asked the mayor the last few years to come and present a trophy on the mayor's pick. He's been gracious enough to do that. And like, again, I want to challenge you to come and see what kind of a good time we can have in Atumwa without a beer tent.
I would just like to say, it is a wonderful car show. I went last year for the first time, and they had close to probably 1,000 people over there at the park. I was really impressed with the turnout, and they've got some fantastic Ford and Mercury vehicles that are on display on Sunday. So I would encourage everybody to try and go Saturday and/or Sunday. It's a great event, and it's a great car show. So appreciate all your ongoing work and for trying to bring that event to Atumwa because I know it was in Bloomfield for several years.
And is that the greater Atumwa Park, correct?
Correct.
Yes. The one thing I forgot to mention, this year we're trying something new. We've gotten businesses in the area and locally to help us underwrite. And at 2:00 on Sunday, we'll be giving $1,000 cash away to a spectator that has gotten a ticket from one of the local or area businesses. The first time we're trying to not only promote the show, but promote the local businesses and draw the public to the car show. You know, there's a lot more to a car show than just chrome and glitz. There's a lot of history in a car show. Every car there is like a little mini museum. Most of them have a story, if you talk to the owners. For instance, this year, we just bought a car back in our family that we took our honeymoon in. So we'll be having it there at the car show, as well as several others. Thank you.
I appreciate you for also talking about all the different entities that you donate funds to because you do give a lot of money out to a lot of worthwhile organizations. So it's very much appreciated. And I think it's good that the public knows that it's a fundraiser, but you turn around and give a lot of that money back out to individuals and agencies in the community. So thank you for sharing. We hope you'll have a good turnout again this year. Next, we have Superintendent Mike McGrory, and I believe he wants to address the council on an update on the tennis project.
Good evening, everyone. As the mayor said, we're here to talk a little bit about the tennis project. I won't go into a lot of detail, but we... Last time we met, I think the council was very supportive of the concept of doing the tennis courts and the concept of where they were going to be located in our pit area. And after that meeting, it came to our attention that there was going to be some city work that needed to be done that might impede the ability to put in the tennis courts. And I think we've worked through that. I think what we'd like to come to the council with is a proposal to do eight tennis courts initially. And then that would allow, and Phil can add or jump in at any time, too, or Dave, is that would allow the city then to do their work as well with the sewer project. So we could do it in unison, so we would not have to wait to start our project until you were done with the sewer project. And the reason that's kind of imperative for the district is the fact that we've been working on this project for over two and a half years, and we still do not have courts that our kids can play on in a competitive stance. And we need to move forward with this project in order to address that need. So that's why we're coming back. We would ask, Phil, I don't know if you want to add anything to it as far as what we're proposing to do. I'll kind of let you if you'd want to say anything, or if that's appropriate, I don't know. I'm on the other end of this, Phil, so I don't know. I'm not as familiar with your rules.
Yes, so this would be your opportunity to, you get to, under this section, to provide that. We do have the item on the table that the council could choose to take off the table, and that would open up more conversation and back and forth. But maybe if you want to just highlight the conversation you had with staff about the getting this out of that work area?
Say that again, Phil.
Oh, I was saying, you'd mentioned that you think you can work without not being in that work area?
Yeah.
So you'd talk with staff about that?
Yeah, we've been working with the city on coming up with that proposal where we can go ahead with our project with eight courts in the pit area and then also allow the city to go ahead with their sewer project kind of at the same time. And so I think we've worked that out. There's a few details left, but we would be excited for the council to move forward with this because we're ready to move forward with the blooding of the bids and then the construction process as well. So that's kind of what we're seeking as a school district tonight.
Did this go before the school board last night, then?
It did, Phil.
Was that successful?
It was, yeah. Our school board's incredibly supportive of this initiative, still totally committed to our $750,000 to the project. I know, talking, also, I think a variable here, too, that the council would be interested in is that, and we so appreciate our friends of the tennis committee, their willingness to raise the funds. They still are totally committed to do that as well. So I think this evening, we're hoping that the city can make the commitment to release the funds, I guess, is what we're asking.
So there will be another, like, schematic or another new design developed in order to work around that, those sewer lines?
Yeah, we actually, I think, Dave, if you want to speak at all?
Yes, Mayor, we've worked closely with PCC Sports and Mr. Bergmeyer to ensure that we're staying outside of that area where the sewer project's going to happen. And we're planning on moving forward, hopefully with the council's approval of the eight courts and along with the resurfacing the parking lot above it, the pit parking area. So we are very confident that we'll be able to start our project without interfering with the city sewer project.
And then would the final goal eventually be at some point to add four more courts at some point in the future for a total of 12, or is that off the table now?
We'll look at future expansion when we can. One thing I did forget, I asked the city to work with us on the stormwater management plan as, so we can look at that after your project, sewer projects completed.
Mr. Kramer, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, Mayor. I would like to just say, we've been kicking this can down the road quite a while. This month, we have a $50,000 request to Waplo County Foundation. In order to get that grant, we have to have approval. And that's, that might go away, like so many other grants have gone away over the last two and a half years. And of course, you know, the loss of people in this community that leave the community because we don't have good facilities, quality facilities. That's a shame. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Does council wish to take this off the table? If not, they can't take any action tonight.
I just have a few questions, and Superintendent McGrory?
I'm sorry, Mark, before you go, to continue to talk about this, it has to be taken off the table. I think that's what Administrator Rath said, correct?
That would be a good idea. They presented on the topic, and the council can't take it off the table. Have further conversation. At that point, you can choose to take action on it or retable it if you still needed more information.
I mean, I guess if we're going to continue to talk about it, then I would make a motion to remove it from the table so we can continue to have the conversation.
Second. Okay, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Okay, and then I'll read the resolution, too, then you guys can open up your discussion, is that okay? Okay. Resolution number 122-2023, instituting proceedings to take additional action and approving the reallocation of certain unspent proceeds of the General Obligation Capital Loan Note Series 2022A of the City of Atumwa, Iowa. Recommendation pass and adopt Resolution number 122-2023.
Do we have a motion to approve that recommendation? So moved.
To talk about it, we need to approve it? Okay, then I would second that.
Okay. Who wanted to speak next?
Am I the good?
Yep, go ahead, Mark.
So during our initial conversations, when I met with you the beginning of this week, or no, it would have been the end of last week, you had mentioned there was a possibility that three houses would have to be purchased to complete this project in full. And that process hasn't really started yet, or it has started? I can't remember.
Sure. No, I'd be glad to clarify that, Mark. Is we have the room to do the eight courts right now. If we were wanting to do four more courts, we would have to look at purchasing probably more property right around that area. The question probably within that is that the city's kind of, I think their preference would be, because this would allow us to expand more courts if we could put courts over their sewer project when they're finished. But I think their preferences, the city's preferences, is that we don't in case you needed to get access to those at a later time. So there's a couple options there that we could look at.
Okay. And what percentage over? Because the original project design was 12 courts, obviously.
Yeah.
And how, what's the price break between doing these eight courts now and the original plan of doing the 12 courts?
Sure. I'll look, I'll give you what I, the information I have.
Sure.
Zach, if you want to jump in, too, you sure can. As the council remembers, when we initially bid, I think we bid for eight courts and then four alternate courts. Those bids came in really high, so we rebid that, kind of re, what we call re-engineered to try to lower the costs and so forth. We got a bid then that came in for eight courts, I believe, for 2.1 million. I believe if we would have put in 12 courts, it would have been another maybe 800,000. Yeah, an additional 800,000. Yeah, an additional 800,000. So I think your question is, Mark, is what, what are we looking at as far as cost wise for just eight courts? So that's what the bid was initially, was 2.1 million for that. We feel like, uh, we can do that and potentially even have them still post tension, uh, that we were looking at courts still, um, at probably a much lower cost and still get eight courts for the, for the amount that the city's committed and the amount that the district has committed.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It makes perfect sense. So just a couple of follow-up questions to that. I know the original spirit of the council vote to approve this was a third, a third, a third. And I, I guess my question would be at this juncture, um, and, and I completely understand the, the inability to raise funds because of the location, all of that stuff. But, um, where, where are we with the Friends of the Atumwa Parks, aside from Bob just mentioned the $50,000, as far as dollar volume from the Friends of the Atumwa Parks at this point? Because I think that, you know, if we're, if we're spending the money and, and, you know, it comes, those minutes come back to haunt us, um, where, where does that line up with the spirit of that original vote?
Sure, and see if this answers the, your question, and, and Bob, feel free to jump in too. But, uh, my understanding is that, uh, and I think, I think we can make this work out this way, is that our 750 and the city's 750 would go towards actually eight courts. The 700 to 750,000 that the, the Friends have committed to raising would go towards, which would be wonderful, is what we need ancillary to that, such as, uh, parking concessions and restrooms would be some of our major costs there, potentially some lighting as well. So right now, we feel good that all three elements would come out to what we initially kind of the initial agreement, um, of the 2.1 million to 2.2 million for this project. So that's why we're excited that, cost wise, I think we can move forward with it, with the initial proposal that we agreed to.
So just, just playing devil's advocate here for a second, we get the courts up, which would be the, the original funding agreement between the city and the school. And then, um, the worst case scenario happens and the Friends of the Atumwa Parks can only raise 100,000 or 150,000. Where does that, where does that back, uh, fall come from?
Yeah, I think that's a really fair question. We have committed as a district that we understand what we're wa, going into, and we, we feel really confident that committee can raise that, but if they don't, then the, the district would assume those, those costs. We are not going to come back and ask the, the city to designate more money.
And then I guess my final question isn't necessarily to you folks, but more to, to Phil. I'm a little bit concerned, um, bec, and maybe it's just me being gun shy here, um, because we, we walked into this not knowing that we had the issue, uh, after we made the vote, uh, regarding this the last time. We walked into this and then we found out subsequent to that, that we had this sewer issue, and, um, the sewer issue is really important to the city of Atumwa because we are under an EPA mandate. And, uh, traditionally, we have not taken any action on anything without seeing any solid plans related to the, the, um, the sewer separation project, be it a street removal or, or, uh, anything like through parks or, or whatever. And now, um, you know, I understand the urgency from the school district's perspective, but we also have a responsibility as a council to ensure that, uh, we're meeting the guidelines of an EPA mandate. And now that we know it's there, um, we haven't been presented with a, any documentation from the city other than a reassurance that, that it's there. And I, personally, um, I think it's, it's a little dangerous for the council to make a decision, um, without having, you know, some sort of written proof that, that, um, there's not going to be another issue that could cost the taxpayers an extra 500,000, a million dollars, you know, a year down the road because there was some unknown that had happened.
Yep. I don't know if Phil wants to speak to that, you sure can. I certainly have thoughts on that that I'd be glad to share after Phil.
I just say that, uh, so the, this is the main trunk line going through here. So the lines and grades of the new sanitary sewer are kind of set in stone. There's a line we're attaching to on Burt Street right now, and we're actually crossing over the box, um, up by Center Street, which is the north side of there, Center Street. So the route of that is pretty much set in stone. It's not going to move up or down, left or right anywhere. We have one line going through where they're at. We've discussed it, um, and have preliminary plans to, to attack, like to take houses and take any flow off of that and route it different directions, which I think is entirely feasible. The plans themselves for this phase, which would be phase three, are about 30% complete, but that 30% includes that main trunk line. We do have preliminary drawings we can present to council. They want to see like the horizontal and vertical of where it's at. Um, it's going to be about 23 feet deep. The existing line there is obviously built in 1899 or something, so it's been there forever. Um, as far as building over it, I'd allow it. It'd be a big risk on them building over a structure that old, especially, you know, an expensive court, you know, versus, you know, a parking lot maybe. But they could always expand their direction, like you said, if they purchase property. But as far as what's underneath that preliminary conceptual plan you guys have in front of you, um, of course, when you dig in the ground, you might find something we don't know about, but as far as we know, there's nothing there. And until they break grounds to do what they're doing, they won't know what's underneath it either. But I think as far as their concept right now, they have a good plan to work around what we're doing. We left ourselves plenty of room on either side as like a, a construction zone, so we won't be interfering with the, the courts if they're there before we are. So I think we can do it.
So you were involved in helping develop this or in conversations when they developed this?
We went out there with the school and with our engineers that are designing the, the sewer separation. We, I think you were there, Dave?
Yep.
Was anybody from your architectural firm there? Did we meet that?
We, we, we relayed the information to, uh, the PCC Sports, uh, the information Mr. Bergmeier gave us to ensure that we have enough room there for eight courts.
Yeah, so we GPSed everything and put flags out, um, on the horizontal alignment, and then we gave them a, a drawing showing the cross section, how deep everything was, where it's, where it's going to go.
And I guess the question that I have is, pulling the courts apart to allow for that main trunk to stay not covered over with new tennis courts? Is there still plenty of room available to do the parking and the concession stands and the public restrooms?
So where the courts are separated, that's not the main trunk. That's our eight inch line. It's a combined storm and sanitary line that serves three houses.
Okay.
Um, and three houses and two intakes. The intakes can easily tie into, uh, Center Street. We're running a storm sewer there anyway. The upstream house, we can tie into Center Street as well. Then we plan on running another sanitary down Hackberry to take the two houses that are right next to the courts and turn them off. And then once that's done, that line can be capped and abandoned. So that, that line will be gone. It'll still be there, but it'll be inactive.
The only reason I asked if there was any problem with auxiliary services being compromised in this revised project would be, this has also got to be available to the citizens of Atumwa, so it's important that you have parking and the concession stands and the public restrooms. So I guess that's why I was asking the question.
We, we've worked with our, uh, uh, rep from the engineer company, and we feel that there is enough room there to provide restrooms and concession stands. By us moving, uh, the courts westward into that parking hill, we also feel that there's adequate enough parking in the pit area, uh, and also along upper in the high school parking lot too.
Thank you. Does council have any other questions, comments they want to make?
Sure. One of the things when we were first looking at this, uh, in the, um, the original location, uh, and the possibility of a grant from USTA was the solar orientation of the courts. Does this account for that as well? Does this meet the proper solo, solar orientation that USTA recommends?
It, it does, Phil. So, yep, it follows those regulations. We wouldn't necessarily for high school courts, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have had to follow all those, but we do, we, we have those, we're using those as the, as the guidelines.
But I would assume if you wanted to have state or other things, there's probably some qualifications they would have to, for that.
There is. They're, they're probably not as extensive as that, but that's the ones we're going to use, uh, since we have the room to do that. Yeah.
I just have a comment, Mike.
Sure.
That, uh, and councilperson Rowe, Rowe talked about it. That was my only concern coming into this meeting was the third and third and third agreement. And then we went from 12 courts to eight. But once you explained the price is what the original 12 was going to be.
Right.
Then, and then you also said if there's a time when you guys add four more, that, that you guys won't come back to the city. I feel better with our original agreement that we would pay up to the 700,000 now, isn't it, since it's on the school property?
I was going to clarify that too.
Yeah, because you guys were saying 750 a couple of times, but, um, so yes, I feel better about the whole situation now.
So just a quick point of clarification, the original amount the city had was 750,000, and that was the maximum we could bond when it was, um, in the, uh,
The city park.
City park. Uh, moving it outside the city park onto school district property, the maximum that we could bond for is 700,000. That's the difference there. If there was an interest in still contributing 750, we'd have to identify where the other 50,000 would come from. That is not on specifically for tonight, uh, but, uh, the up to 700,000 is.
So I, I have never, I have never wavered support for this project. I, I think that it's needed. I, I agree with, with, uh, Mr. Kramer's comments 100%. I've just, I've been around the block long enough to now to know that, um, you know, I, I think that voting on this tonight is, is a little bit premature because we have not seen, uh, the, the planning from, from the Public Works Department. You know, we're, we're 70 some million dollars into a sewer separation project right now, and this would, this would, at least in the seven years and seven months that I've been on council, would be the very first time that we'd be taking a vote that revolves around anything sewer separation where we haven't had a plan in front of our faces. That concerns me just a little bit. And, and, you know, to Phil's point, um, if we did make a motion to, to make a, a, a budgetary adjustment, we'd be making that on the fly, not knowing exactly what funding we're coming from. So I, I don't dispute anything about this. I think that we're just a little bit premature. It's being brought, it's being brought here and pulled off of the table when we don't have enough information to make sound decisions as a city council. That's just my opinion.
I'll say we can, our engineers and theirs can get together, we can overlay our construction with theirs and put it on the same drawing if that would help you guys kind of visualize where everything is relative to each other on there.
Yeah, that would be perfect.
Mark, I, I want to kind of speak to your comments. I, I totally understand the need to be prudent, to look at every angle, but, uh, I got to be honest, enough's enough. You know, uh, we've been prudent on our end. We've, we have tried to save this project. We've tried to make this work. I have a lot of confidence we can make this happen. I, if I was, if I wasn't two and a half years into this scenario, I would feel like what you're saying. But after going through this for two and a half years and seeing what's got that process, I think, I think it's time for the council to, to say, okay, we have faith in the school district to make this happen. We've done what we need to do to make sure that we can do this project. I totally get what you're saying. I, if this was the first time we were, we came into a hurdle, uh, I'd be totally where you're at, but this isn't the first time.
No, I, I totally understand what you're saying. I do appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions before we take the vote?
Well, just let me clarify that, so the, the comment about the, the funds, we have received, we've previously borrowed the 750,000, and that is sitting in the bank. So the, what we're talking about moving would be those bond funds from the, uh, the project in Sycamore Park, um, shelving that project and then contributing whatever amount of funds up to 700,000 to the site that's being presented, uh, for the, the pit. The $50,000, that's the part that was questionable, the, if it was, so you have up to 700,000 you put, if you wanted to contribute the full 750, that other 50,000 would have to be done at a different time and decide where that was coming from. So just to clarify the, what you're potentially voting on.
Yeah, and I just want to ask Philip one more question, um, too. So how long would something like that take that you just described overlaying? Because, I mean, if that's what it's going to take to make everyone feel comfortable and it's going to take, you know, a day, like, can we schedule a quicker meeting too? Like?
We have the drawing now. We actually gave it to the school to, to, so they would, they could use it to place that. It's unfortunate, I guess, it wasn't included with the, the concept drawing, but they had that, they had our, our drawings with them when they, when they did this. We gave them to them already, we gave it to the school.
Okay, so to clarify, you went down to the pit, correct? And you helped align?
Yeah, our GIS guy came with the school and with our engineers, and we, we took our GPS and, and shot the center line of the existing sewer, um, the center line of the new one that's to the east of that. And then we marked out our required work area, which we gave us, we gave us ourselves 50 foot each side of our new sewer. So we have 50 feet to the east and 50 feet, so 100 foot total corridor width through there to construct our sewer with.
And then you provided your drawings that, of the sewer separation project, which is about 30% complete. However, it includes the, um, the piece that we're talking about.
Yeah, the first thing we do is the, the trunk line, which is, this is, what, what goes through here is the trunk line. So it has, it's set first, then everything builds off of that. So that part's done.
Okay, so you provided that to the school or to their architects who are able to use that to en, complete these drawings, correct?
Yeah, and then they fit their courts
To ensure that it fits.
Outside of the area we gave them. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct. We, uh, we use the information that the city gave us to work with PCC Sports to ensure that we had enough room there and ensure that we're not approaching on the sewer project. So.
Another point, oh, go ahead, I'm so sorry.
No, finish your thought.
Well, I was just going to say, so Philip, you, um, what's your confidence level that this is with the sewers, whatever you're calling it? I forget, I'm sorry.
Sewer separation.
Yeah, the sewers, or the piece that's in there. You're confident that the, these plans do not intrude on that project?
I'm very confident. We're, in order for our new sewer to interfere with their courts, we'd have to cross that eight foot by 10 foot box sewer pre, like prior to the, so we're already on Burt Street. So we're a block away, a block and a half away.
Okay.
We'd have to somehow cross through that box with 30 inch line, which we can do right now because we're at the wrong elevation. So we physically, that, that 30 inch line, no matter how we change it, we really can't cross that box till we get to Center Avenue or Center Street. So in order for that 30 inch line to interfere with their courts, I don't know what we, we have to run into something that was immovable, and I, I don't see that happening. We've dug through rock. It'd have to be like a, I don't know, something that the city or government wouldn't let us move, which I don't, I don't, the whole thing's been dug up before. I mean, all, all it is, is a buried ravine right now. That box was built in the bottom of a ravine and then buried in dirt. So it's, it's all fill right there. There's nothing new. I, I, I want to say zero, but virtually 0% chance we'd cross that with our, we, virtually 0% chance we'd have to cross that, that storm sewer with our, our new sanitary before we get to that, that lot. I just don't see it happening.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if it's physically possible for us to even do it right now without, like, yeah, I don't think we could.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions from council?
Just one more question. This, uh, this capital loan note, that was a 700, a 700,000 note, correct?
The, the original loan was the 750,000, but moving it to this other site, we have up to 700,000 legally that we can contribute.
So by approving this tonight, we can only, we can only approve 700,000. We're going to have to do a second measure for the 50,000, which is going to require a budgetary amendment, correct?
Most likely, yes.
Okay. Just making sure that I'm correct on that.
Any other comments or questions from council?
Can I actually add one thing as well? So this is a project I've been involved with quite a bit. I think there's a couple of things I would just want to kind of add into the conversation for the sake of clarity. I do support, um, figuring out a way to get the eight courts there. We need them, the plan for the tennis, or for the Greater Atumwa Park Plan and the conference of plans identified the need, uh, it's clear from the sports ac, activities groups as well. But this was money that was marked to go toward the Greater Atumwa Park project. That's why it was an essential corporate purpose and not a general corporate purpose. And so in a sense, this is defunding that program in order to put it into a place that isn't a park. And I think that there's some things that are lost there. I think that we do want to make sure going forward, we get something more concrete than just word said in a meeting, that this will be in perpetuity available to the public, because that's a difference between something in a park and something not in a park. Um, and so I think that we have to make sure that there's some more, uh, you know, to guarantee that access as well. And I do want to make sure that we don't lose focus on the Greater Atumwa Park project. We invested a lot into putting that plan together. Tennis doesn't have to be in that. If we want to amend it and take tennis out, that's fine, but I'd like to make sure that we still focus on, uh, putting the funds that we need to make that park what it should be, because that's what this was supposed to be, was the first step toward that. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? There's been a motion made and seconded to approve resolution 122- There's been a motion made and seconded to approve resolution 122-2023, so the council either needs to vote it up or vote it down. So Chris will.
Can we have one?
Well, you have to table it after you've voted up or down.
Can we have one more clarification on exactly what we are voting on?
Do you want me to read it for you again?
Go ahead.
Okay. Resolution number 122 2023 instituting proceedings to take additional action and approving the reallocation of certain unspent proceeds of the general obligation capital loan notes series 2022A of the city of Atumwa, Iowa.
Thank you. It would be the 700,000.
Right.
Does everybody understand? Okay, any other comments or questions before we take the role? And Chris is going to ask for your vote. Okay, Chris, take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on any item that's not on our agenda tonight? If not, does the council, I don't have any specific report for the public. Does the council have any comments, announcements or anything they'd like to make?
I do. I just want to give accolades to a few departments here within the city. First off, I want to give accolades to the Parks Department, especially the beach staff. They did two events with Main Street Atumwa. They were phenomenal to work with and just absolutely amazing. The second group I want, department I want to give to, accolades to, is the Police Department. I've been working closely with a few lieutenants with the Police Department. They volunteer their time often. They are willing to jump up when I say, hey, can you help me with something or volunteer for us? And it's just been phenomenal to see, to see that. So, and then the last department, too, is the Electrical Department? Is that?
Electricians.
Oh, the electricians, thank you. Again, I am planning a suicide prevention walk in Greater Atumwa Park, and they have really stepped up to walk us through to ensure that we have what we need, and it's just been absolutely phenomenal working with all the departments, but these ones I've been working with recently, and I just, I appreciate all the, all the helpfulness and the kindness, and they've just been awesome to work with.
The city has great staff, and I appreciate your comments and recognizing those various departments. Thank you. Anybody else have any comments?
I have something to say. Before I ran for city council a little over a year and a half ago, I asked the city administrator and powers to be that, that I still coach football, and if that was going to be a problem with me missing a couple meetings during the fall, because if it was going to affect it, then I probably wouldn't have ran for city council. So the answer that I got was as long as you have a good reason to miss and we have a quorum, that that would be okay. So I'm letting the public know that I will miss two council meetings in September. And if you guys have a question or concern about that, I presume you not put that on Facebook. I would appreciate it if you would just call me personally and I'll explain it to you at that point. Thank you.
Anybody else have any other comments or things they'd like to say? If not, I guess we're ready for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, for attending our city council meeting tonight, and safe travels home.